They did though.
You are visually.
I've made a mistake.
I'm just stuck in the orbit.
Oh, you should say. Yeah, yeah. I did it in my last.
You guys want to go P M?
Yeah.
That was that nice.
So was that high school?
Mm-hmm.
Like was the new high school was.
This is around.
Right. And what's now the middle school for high school?
It looks six.
The middle school.
Correct. It was built before or long before.
Which is a family but a burn your trail by.
Maybe sixteen.
Report.
In the city.
Yeah.
No, she did mention the last.
All of us.
My three and all.
Feel seriously. I think we're about full. Come on. Oh, yeah, no.
Tell me right.
It'll be, yeah, well, he stole my record. Choice meeting.
Does he come in?
Forty-two thirty. I know. Okay, six-thirty, I think we're chief, we're good on. Anybody joining us online here?
Uh, Greg is trying to, but. Says joining, so.
All right, well, we'll get moving here, it is six-thirty. Call the October sixteenth meeting of the Melbourne City Council to order. Mayor Reesler is unable to join us, so I'll be leaving the circus tonight. And let's see, first off, is approval of the agenda, any changes we need to make?
I would move to approve. Second.
Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. All opposed? Agenda is approved. Onto communications, if you would like to speak to something that is on tonight's agenda, please wait for that item to be called, otherwise, if you've got something that is not on the agenda, please approach the letter, name and address, and we'll go for it.
My name is Jackie Martin, and I live at three twelve Second Avenue.
Did you push the mic button? Thank you.
Oh, sorry. My name is Jackie Martin, I live at three twelve Second Avenue Northwest, and I am just here to tell you that I think the new planter and flag looks wonderful. I love driving past it, and I would like to thank all of you for putting it in motion and the city workers who built it and constructed it, and it looks great, and I know when the flags are all flying there, it's gonna look even better, so thanks a lot.
Thank you, Jackie.
Oh, should I turn it off?
You're okay, it's fine.
Is it okay?
Yeah, it's fine, thank you.
And.
And I know Eldon's gonna be talking about this later, but it does look great.
It does. Anybody else for the communications section? With that, we'll move on to the consent agenda. We've got three items, approval of the previous two meeting minutes and liquor license for the Lincoln Wine Bar.
I'd move approval of the consent agenda is presented.
Well, second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Consent agenda passes, we have no public hearings and no ordinances. Onto resolutions for approval, we've got resolution ten sixteen twenty-three A, annual TIP report. This is where you earn your big bucks here.
Actually, uh, this is where Brad earns his big bucks. He does fill this out for us, it is, it's kind of a cumbersome report that the state requires us to fill out when they were contemplating making changes to the TIP laws, the compromise was to study where the TIP companies were going, so they require us for the last nine years now, TIP about this report. Nothing earth shattered in here, you get the same thing when you certify the TIP debt in December.
But this is end of the year?
So this is.
End of the fiscal year?
Yeah, so the certification of TIP happens on a calendar year versus a fiscal year, so, um, this represents the TIP calendar year versus the fiscal year, but yes, this will be to the end, will be certified for this year.
Do we need to act on this?
Yep.
Do we need to approve the resolution? Are there any other questions? If not, I would move to approve resolution ten dash sixteen dash twenty twenty-three A, approving the annual urban renewal report.
Yes. Second.
Moved and seconded, uh, believe this is a roll call?
Turner?
Yes.
Engel?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes. All right, on to resolution ten sixteen twenty twenty-three B, approving the DOT street finance report for fiscal year twenty-three.
This is another annual report, um, because we receive road use tax funds in the state, they require us to account for those funds and then where those funds are actually used within the city. It also provides them an inventory of the equipment that we have.
I'd move approval of resolution ten dash sixteen dash twenty twenty-three B.
Second.
Okay, another roll call, please.
Turner?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Engel?
Yes.
All right, on to resolution ten sixteen twenty twenty-three C, approving the annual financial report for fiscal year twenty-three.
This is a report that goes to the state as well, um, and this is based upon the last actuals, so, uh, for everybody's purposes, our budget is based upon our best estimate at the beginning of each fiscal year, and then we have to correct that at the end of each fiscal year. That's, this is that report.
I think reconcile is a better term.
That works.
Because the focus is really on that page forty-seven, that, the summary page, and then the itemization is what follows there, right?
Correct.
Okay, and so we, our revenues were short about nine hundred thousand dollars, where our expenses were also short about three million dollars.
Yeah, still, um.
Which is a good.
For the, the biggest, um, issue that we have when it comes to budgeting is capital improvement, so we start the year based upon the number of projects that we believe are going to happen in the estimate, so that's usually what ends up happening is we weren't able to do a capital project in that year, and we had budgeted for, say, a million dollars for streets and.
We'll carry it over.
Yep.
Understood. Now, I would move approval of resolution ten dash sixteen dash twenty-three C, approving the annual financial report for fiscal year twenty-three.
Second.
And a roll call, please.
Engel?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Okay, and then we've got resolution ten sixteen twenty twenty-three D, making the award of the construction bid for street color repairs for business thirty.
Yeah, this is a semi-emergency repair, the culvert that is, um, for those that have driven business thirty westbound just to pass the ten, um, alleyway roundabout, obviously it was a cone off to the side and some asphalt, there's actually a fissure that's been opened up, the culvert that is below that section has failed and pulled apart, so it sucked dirt and created a void, so, um, we'll use buyout funds from that portion and get that corrected. We did correct one culvert, this culvert looked fine, um, when we took it over, but it's, it's.
Thirty-one thousand, we'll, um, put a band-aid on it or?
No, the bid would be to correct culvert at thirty thousand eight hundred eighty-nine dollars, so, now, once the culvert is fixed, um, then we won't lose any of the sub-base
It'll be fixed for a while.
Mm-hmm.
Great.
Is that a, I mean, I don't even, is there enough traffic out there to worry about how that's gonna be handled, or we?
No, to the, the, well, the fissure right now is, is minimal, so, um, we're not worried about people driving over it.
I mean, when they.
When they have to reroute, yes, they're probably going to have to reroute them back towards, um.
Well, like.
Toward Highway one and to get onto the interstate that way.
Okay.
This will likely be an open cut.
Okay.
Just cut it open, and if they have to replace sections of the culvert, they can just catch it.
Probably won't take very long.
Um, no, I would assume that this is a precast, not a port.
It should go pretty quick.
That's days, right, Eldon?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
I only get concerned when they have to pour in place, so when they pour those culverts, but this is not a aside or a unique construction.
Excellent. Um, any further questions or concerns?
No. I move approval of resolution ten dash sixteen dash twenty twenty-three D, award of the contract, uh, construction bid for street culvert repairs for the business thirty culvert repair project.
I will second.
And another roll call, please.
Rose?
Yes.
Engel?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
All right, resolution ten sixteen twenty twenty-three E, approving the fiscal year twenty twenty-three transfers for, I believe, reconciliation, as we're calling it now.
Yeah, we're moving seventeen thousand three hundred forty-six dollars and seventy-seven cents from franchise fees to that service, and then from that service, moving that same amount to road use tax, we just pulled too much out of road use tax.
I'd move through approval resolution ten dash sixteen dash twenty twenty-three E, approving fiscal year twenty twenty-three transfers.
I'll second. Uh, another roll call, please.
Turner?
Yes.
Engel?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes. Yeah, I know, I know, thought I'd get in on the action there. Um, we don't have any proclamations, it was poorly planned, right? No more business, on to the marshals for approval. We've got the claims list, uh, Marcia sent out the addendum to it this afternoon. Questions or concerns on that?
Not the first time she'll ever see at the top of the list something other than payroll.
That's true.
Big bill for Moon Ray.
Uh-huh, there's something to be said for consistency on that payroll claim at the top.
I group approval of the claims list is presented.
Second.
Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, discussion and consideration of purchasing a power washer system for the new police building.
Very good, thank you. This was a, it's more of the system that will power the power washer, um, and dogwash bay and bring the hot water and everything to the garage section. Initially, we had, we had already purchased and had in hand a fifty-gallon water heater and a smaller one, knowing this construction projects were coming in a couple of years ago, um, to bring hot water, because when we moved in, there was no hot water at all from that that was functioning anyway, there was modules up in the ceiling. So we were working on that, we had a staffing change, they never got installed, um, so as part of our bid package, we included those water heaters, because they were still brand-new, and having those installed, long story short, neither one of those water heaters would accommodate or sufficiently run a, the, the system for the garage and the dogwash bay and stuff like that, so this is more of the gas line, the electrical outlet to it, and it's on-demand system for that portion of it, and getting that in place, and then a couple outlets in the garage that we, um, there were two outlets in the entire garage space, I think, on the north end, and so now we've got them in each, each of the four corners.
So you won't have to take your vehicles anymore down to the corner of car wash or anything like that?
Correct.
And you do see those bills regularly?
Yeah, it'll help us eliminate, it'll eliminate that portion of it, but then it'll also allow us the ability to keep the salt, sand, and clean the floors in the existing bays and everything else, too.
Uh, do we have an option for the thus unused water heaters?
They, those are still being installed.
Oh, okay.
Um, so they'll be, the larger one will be for the locker rooms, the other one is for the bathrooms, the, the new bathrooms that are in, um, it was just, neither one of them were, the bigger one was too far away, and the little one was not big enough to accommodate all the need.
Sounds good. Uh, any other questions or concerns on the power wash system? Oh, in that case, I will move approval of the power wash system purchase for the new police station totaling ten thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars.
Second.
Uh, some motions, so all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries, uh, discussion and consideration of pay application number ten for the police station renovations.
Number ten of how many? I know we're getting close.
We are.
We have to be getting close, because.
When you see the big ones, that's, that's when you're getting close.
This is a big one.
Well, so, out of the, I don't know, one point one five million dollar project, you have about two hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars to pay.
To prove to.
So, this pay application's in the amount of two hundred and three thousand five forty-six oh five, um, yeah, honestly, if you have a, a chance to get out there and take a quick walk around, uh, you can definitely get a good idea of the spaces now, the finishes are having begun, um, the garage is up and finished, the garage doors are in, so. Yeah, exactly.
Nope.
And cleaning out the fire station?
Yes.
Done.
Really?
Done.
Wow, okay, excellent. With that, I move approval of pay application number ten for the police station, the amount of two hundred and three thousand five hundred and forty-six dollars and five cents.
I'll second that.
Uh, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor of pay application number ten, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, we've got reports, police.
Nothing additional, there are no ones in there. Any questions?
What, I'm just curious, what you can attribute the root cause to all these parked cars being there?
I know.
There was, there's been several in both communities, actually, from that perspective.
People have lost the ability to back up safely.
And it's not just this, it's kind of, this was the, sort of, the tipping point for me to just ask if there's any.
There's nothing to identify, other than, I mean, you got, are they, are we relying too much on sensors and cameras and stuff like that, and not looking from, from some of that? You know, most weeks, the ones uptown are, you know, you got a little bit of, it's, it's congested, or you got a small car next to a big van, I had that almost today, um, coming through the downtown area and stuff like that due to the tightness, but some of the driveways and stuff where you would think they would be used to checking, they're just not checking, or from there.
Not reading the little thing on the screen saying, be aware of your surroundings.
Yeah, objects in the mirror closer than they appear.
Okay, that, that makes sense.
Yeah.
And I, I hadn't thought about relying too much on the, because my head's on a swivel, whether I've got the camera or not.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Any other, uh, questions or comments for chief? Hope it works.
I don't have anything to add. Yeah, we're pretty proud of the, the planter out there, everything went pretty well.
So, I would just like to, to echo, uh, Jackie's, uh, comments on how nice it, it looks, and, uh, the surprise, uh, fall okay, if you will. The other thing that I, that I notice is it, it's much more pedestrian-friendly on that corner of, uh, the sidewalk on, on First Street, so while we all love trees and, and they're good, there are certain places where open space makes sense, and I think of all the times during festivals and, you know, Cho- Chocolate Block, Heritage Days, Chocolate Stroll, one of my favorites, um, that, where there seemed to be this, you know, narrowing of, of walkway there, and so I, I, I just really think it made a difference, uh, and will make that area much, much better for those, uh, walking through there.
There's a few things we need to touch up yet, uh, we need to seal the joints and we.
I didn't want to break it up.
Clean some stuff up on the stone, we had cleaned some stuff up on the stone, but the other, the other bigger thing, I guess, that, um, the lighting right now, the, the light that's on the side of City Hall is shined on the old existing flagpole, it's not very bright, and it's not pointing in the right spot right now, so we gotta swivel that, and we may check in, we may just replace it altogether, but, um, and, uh, we have to order another solar unit that sits on top of the, the north flagpole, um, so just some lighting issues, um, we didn't want to overpower the lighting on the planter itself, it was more of a distant warm fuzzy glow around there to, but you know it's there, but, but, yeah.
Yeah, that looks very light, thank you. Uh, anything else for Eldon? All right, parks and rec we received. Things are moving along. Um, and I do, I know Matt's not here, but I do appreciate the LBC numbers, uh, just to keep track, and I also appreciated the inclusion of the library report.
Yeah, since Grace has taken over, that's something that she's, um, plans to take into view.
That was good. Discussion items, well, first, before we move on, any conversation about parks and rec or the library? Okay, uh, discussion items, the sidewalk program updates.
So this is just an update, I wanted to, to let everybody know that the, the sidewalks that are, that remain occupied in the northwest quadrant, the southeast quadrant and the northeast quadrant all be bid next spring, um, I, I know there are individuals, and I live in the northwest quadrant, so I get asked this quite a bit, why did we hurry up and have to do everything to ours, and then everybody else hasn't, well, COVID derecho and then the lack of contractors willing to do sidewalks, um, has been the culprit, but, uh, we do believe that we'll be able to, um, have a successful project next spring. I don't want to, uh, there's a number of homeowners that are hopping on the, the city's, um, bid, and I don't want to have a square foot price that is out of proportion for them, so, we have bought our time probably a little longer than what we had, had wished, but, um, yeah, hope the project will be for that will leave one quadrant remaining to make a, a full circle, um, and then I think the council will have time to converse about the next phase, so originally, we were going to go through sidewalk programs, make the necessary changes, uh, to make them safe, grinding, replacing, whatever, the next phase was to look at gaps, um, I think that conversation warrants a lot more research, not only in staff part, but public councils, because, uh, keep in mind, you're going to push probably in, in locations that don't currently have sidewalks, may never have had sidewalks, there are some areas that don't make any sense, um, and I think what staff will do is kind of put together some parameters for you to consider, um, as it relates to where it makes financial sense to put sidewalks and where it may not, so, case in point that I always use is across from nature park, uh, would be massively paying off along four properties in order to try and build a sidewalk on that side, we have a trail on the south side of the city, so, when we look at the gaps, it won't just be.
Sidewalk for sidewalks.
There isn't a sidewalk there currently, so we're at a point.
And I know, and I'm sure Matt will bring it up, but we had a, I think it was University of Iowa students back when I was chair of Parks and Rec, did a study on connectedness throughout the city, and I know it still lives out there, but there were, they identified, it wasn't that many, five, maybe half a dozen?
Yeah.
Points that if we do X, Y, and Z, all of a sudden, we've got, you know, the whole city, uh, circled.
Yeah, they're pretty sporadic.
Yeah, yeah.
It's not as, as significant as you think, but, um, one that I think about all the time is Eighth Street.
Yep.
Doesn't matter.
That's gonna be.
Eighty sidewalks, but then there's an awful lot of street trees that you're gonna have to consider, um, is the sidewalk worth replacing or pulling out trees, so, those are the types of things that you probably have another year and a half to kind of contemplate that, but just be thinking about, this, this part was easy, this is kind of an enforcement action of an existing ordinance, when it comes to filling gaps in sidewalks, it gets very political very fast.
Questions, comments, concerns on that? Uh, industrial commercial pretreatment manual, this was.
Did you get a quizus on this?
Delightful.
No, so, um, I had put out the, I'll call it a care, a care, probably not a pleasant one, um, of industrial users potentially wanting to hook to our sewer system, in order for that to happen, we would have to, uh, adopt a pretreatment manual, um, the major difference is when we do something like that, where we know that we're accepting waste from an industrial user, is when they're not on our system, they're kind of a ward of the state, um, when we accept them, we've now taken responsibility of that, so, if they have or send heavy metals to our plants, for instance, and our test fails, the DNR doesn't go to the industrial user anymore, they come to the city and go, what's going on, so, um, I don't need a lot of discussion on this many, I just wanted to get in front of you, um, what we've been working on, so it kind of makes sense on how complicated this, this issue can and will be.
Pardon me, but about six months ago, four, six months ago, nameplate was looking to, is this applicable to that discussion?
Yeah.
Okay. That's a real life scenario right there.
Yes.
Thank you. I appreciate the new diligence and, and having an opportunity to have that time reading.
I appreciate it, you should sit in the meetings with the individuals that are writing these manuals sometime, I like to think myself semi-intelligent, until I sit in there, and then I feel like I'm watching The Big Bang Theory.
Yeah, yeah, I'm good on that, thank you. Uh, any, all right, all right, um, reports, mayor's report, uh, nonexistent council reports.
So, neither of the folks generally involved with CDG are here, um, so I, I would just like to, uh, say thank you to the CDG and the Chili Cookoff Committee, I've got Sue Margine as the chair, um, it was a fabulous event, um, Sue did a great job ordering weather, and that was like the perfect day in taste chili, so, um, and, uh, and going to look at Eldon and chief and no problems from, from your end, everything went well, so.
Great.
Good, good, I just, uh, it is one of those events that I, I remember when we first started, it was kind of a, are we going to be able to sustain this type of thing, and they have, they've done an excellent job, and I just want to give credit where credit's due.
I think we need to try to consider, um, I got some complaints from the guys when they came in to close down, and this happens pretty regularly for festivals, but it's, was supposed to stop at seven, and then they didn't even start till eight, trying to close things down, it was just that, it was that, it went that well, I guess.
People didn't want to leave.
But, um, of course, we got guys there on overtime, and they, they came in at the time they're supposed to, and, um, so, I don't know.
Maybe we leave the schedule for the seven and just have the guys planning coming in today?
They said that, exact thing.
We, we and my business was called Fudge Back.
Yep.
Good, okay, um, and, and immediately prior to the Chili Cookoff, we had the ribbon cutting for the Sculpture Trail, um, that went well, Marie had some nice words to say about Campana, and then I stood in for Tom as well, then. in for Tom as well then, and nice little crowd, and then they looked, thank you to you guys.
Yeah.
They look nice down there, so. And I don't know, I think it was in the paper, but Marie also announced it then, that the Moberen Arts Council has already secured ten grand for expansion of this into next year, so, with the Iowa Economic Development Authority, something. Uh, committee reports. Okay, and city administrators' reports.
The only thing that I'm going to add to the flagpole is quite unusual, given in a large public works department, to have stone masons that can make a planter look like that. I also want to give a shout out to Jane, I've come to find out or learn that when Jane says I have an idea, that I just take a step back, say okay, and let her go do her thing. She did an amazing job, obviously, filling the, the planter and then, um, yeah, the whole area, you know, the expectation is to get a couple more benches from Liberty Iron Works to kind of rip within that setting, but, um, one of these days, trying to figure out the thousands of dollars that all of my staff, the culvertists, has saved the city by doing projects internally.
So are you saying, I just want to clarify, that one of your guys did the stone work, like, actually not just ordered the stones, picked them up, put them where they needed to go, like shaped them, and?
Yes.
That's phenomenal.
They poured the, the footings and, and foundation wall for the planter and then placed the stone on the outside. Three.
They have very talented.
Yeah.
Probably available for weekend contracts.
I know what you're. Matt Plots goes, we can do that, you know, and I, I worked construction when I worked for a mason company, and I'm like, you sure? I'm like, okay.
Were you standing around outside City Hall?
I did, I did go out that door quite frequently just to get a, to get a glimpse, and they did try to ask me or try to give me the mix of the mud for them, which, I put that shovel down a long time ago. But it's just incredible, I can't say enough, like I said, I've been in much larger cities where staffs have, you know, three or four times the size, don't accomplish quite as much as these guys do, so.
I will say it was a challenge to have to actually, not everybody does everything the way you would do it, so it was, I have to step out sometimes, but they did a great job.
It looks great.
Yeah.
We did receive six responses.
Is that okay?
Looking so forward to reading through all of them. Very much looking forward to letting her do that.
It's one of the big five projects for the next year or two, so it'll be an important read.
We're gonna have a potluck, the, the goal is to start having, now that renovations are done in all these locations and life has returned to semi-normal. We always have our employee appreciation in December, this is just more of a get-together staff, this Friday, welcome to join. Uh, last thing, I did receive an email over the weekend, the one probably negative thing that did occur, um, over the weekend after Chili Cookoff, cookoff, is that we had somebody fall. The brick pavers that are at Highway one at that intersection were all put on the sand bid, and they've started to settle. We have some, some options, probably none that can be accomplished before winter. I think the plan is to have whatever company decides, or you decide to hire for the RFP to take a look at that real quick. Uh, normally, I don't like doing those pavers unless we have some sort of concrete or asphalt base, sand just settle up almost immediately, and I would say between an inch to three inches slips around everything. We can't just go in and grind, there's a three-inch lip on a curb, and then grind that down, and so, um, we are aware of it.
Is the person okay?
They are, they did hit their head, obviously, it had a little.
It's really.
Significantly, it is probably one of eight, what I think has happened since I've been in Moberen. We just, we have a very active downtown, we have a lot of curbs, I think one of the things that we'll address in this RFP is to try to declutter sidewalks, I don't particularly care how they designed around the trees, it's just a saw cut right now, so hoping that a lot of those answers will be given to us by the consultants over the course of the next eight to twelve months. We are aware of it, and we'll try to see what we're going to come up with a fix, and then the coordination, obviously, of what the DOT wants to do on Highway one versus what we're going to do on First, so, there'll be a lot of activity in the next three to four years on our major drill pairs.
Do we have any further guidance on when Highway one would, that project would begin?
So we met, staff I met with engineers today, we were doing design work on D and K, and they have a meeting Wednesday, Wednesday with the DOT, just to kind of get an update. They're still aiming for the twenty twenty-seven construction season. Still looks like that's potentially for two phases, a north and a south.
Sure.
So.
Excellent. Anything else? All right, nothing else, this meeting stands adjourned.